Okay. Want to thank everybody for joining us. Good Friday afternoon to you. My name is T. Stripling and I'm president of Solid Solutions Development. Ernest and I want to thank everybody for taking the time to join us for this Zoom call. We're really, really excited to have this opportunity to speak with you today. I think folks that know Ernest and I know that we would absolutely prefer to have discussions with you all in person and have that personal connection, but we realize the concerns for COVID-19 and we want to make sure we're being as careful as possible. So we decided to do these calls instead. And we think this is hopefully going to be a great way to communicate with y'all during this period. But anyway, today we're going to talk about the proposal we hope to formally submit to Harilson County in the near future for the development of a solid waste landfill in light to medium sized industrial park near Interstate 20 and exit five. We'll then field questions from you as we work through talking about the project details and addressing some concerns that we've heard voiced by citizens in the community. It's of more value as a company to be open and transparent with our development proposals. We believe that informing the local community on the benefits of our projects is in our best interest and that the residents of Harilson County are capable of making up their own mind either way, once they have accurate information. So it's really important that after Ernest and I make our presentation here, that we get a chance to answer some questions from everybody listening. We want to be respectful of your time, so we're going to limit our presentation to 30 minutes and then allocate what we hope is going to be about 30 minutes for answering questions. We also want to point out that while we may not agree on every point, I think we can all agree that we should be respectful of each other's opinion and listen. That's the best way we can make informed decisions for Harilson County. And if somebody chooses not to follow these guidelines, we're going to be forced to mute them on the Zoom meeting. So just kind of want to make that clear. Hopefully that takes care of all the housekeeping items. What I want to do first is I want to introduce my partner Ernest Kaufman. Many of you have met him, but if you haven't, I want to give you some background. Ernest served three terms as a city councilman and part of that time as city council president in Huntsville, Alabama. As a member of the city council, Ernest had to make major decisions about their solid waste recycling operations. Ernest took time to study and visit some of the best programs in the country. He helped start and served on the city's solid waste disposal authority, which has been financially stable for over 30 years. From there, Ernest went on to work with or consult more than a dozen communities and companies to develop long-term financially sound programs to handle solid waste and recycle. Over his career, Ernest has permitted and supervised the development or expansion of 15 environmental facilities, including the most recent MSW landfill to be permitted in the state of Georgia located in Meriwether County. In fact, I want to point out to the listeners, if they have not had a chance to yet, there was an article that was written in the front page of the Gateway Beacons newspaper last week on that Meriwether County development project. So for people that haven't had a chance to see that yet, I would really encourage you to go and read it for yourself. But frankly, I'm condensing a lifetime worth of experience for Ernest in a few sentences, but I think it's fair to say that there are few people who have been on both sides of the aisle for solid waste discussions, more so than Ernest, having served time as an elected official and also being an experienced business executive like he is. So really, I think the best way for us to start off this discussion, Ernest, would be trying to address some of the misinformation that is out there about our project. And maybe the best way for us to do that is is give you an opportunity to talk about aspects of aspects that our proposal will not contain.
Yeah, what we always see when we start a project, it doesn't matter if it's Texas or Wyoming or Georgia or Alabama, you see a lot of statements made by opposition groups of things that are absolutely just not even close to the facts. What we're not going to be, which I always like to start out telling people what we're not going to be. What we're not going to be is a hazardous waste landfill. What we're not going to be is a 2,700 acre landfill. What we're not going to be is a landfill that fronts on I-20. What we're not going to be is a landfill that accepts coal ash and sewage sludge. What we're not going to be is a landfill that accepts out of state waste. And we're not, certainly not going to be a landfill that takes waste by rail. Now, what we are going to be is a traditional municipal solid waste landfill that will accept the kind of material that you put out on the curb in the afternoons or the mornings and restaurant waste and stuff coming out of offices. So it's not going to be this, you know, the stuff that a lot of people have been told. We're not going to be coming off of Highway 78 or we're not going to be coming off north on 100. Actually, we'll be coming off approximately 400 yards after you get off the interstate on the highway 100. So those are the things we're not going to be. And the rest of our conversations this afternoon are going to talk about how we're going to deal with that and the items that we do take and things such as our host agreement and the site selection process and all. T?
Absolutely. It's so important that we talk about a little bit about the misinformation that's been spread about the project and we get an opportunity to tell folks the facts. And really, when we've met with a lot of people in the community, Ernest, oftentimes we get a great question from them saying, well, why did y'all choose this site in Harilson? You know, what aspects of it are unique? And I think that really helps us tell some of the story about the project. So Ernest, maybe you could spend a little time talking to people about that.
Okay. Well, I think the one thing that probably notes us from, separates us from other companies that are doing this kind of work is we don't really select the site. The site selects itself. Now, we look at, first off, what the environmental constraints are for the site. And we do an extensive laptop desktop study of what we call fatal flaws that would stop the project immediately. That's the most important piece of it. We look for pieces of property that are minimum 1,000 acres that can pass the fatal flaw aspect of it. And then if it has good transportation in and out, close to an interstate. As we said before, this one is approximately 400 or 500 yards off of the interstate. This site is a lot like the one that we did in Meriwether County and the fact that it affords us the opportunity to do an industrial park that fronts on the interstate, which if you look at where most successful industrial parks are, they're very close or else fronting on the interstate. It allows us to take a large piece of property and to be able to set up a 300 acre footprint as best we can in the middle of it. Now, what that does, it helps us to isolate the facility so that unless you're going to drive down the entrance road that's more than a mile long, you know, it's not going to be seen, heard, smelled, smelled and a lot of other things. And so it's really because of the topography of this land and all the different elevation changes, it hides itself. Because of the topography of the land, it really dictated exactly where that footprint had to be. So people have said, well, you know, you're going to have a 300 acre footprint and you're going to expand it. We're going to have an host agreement application where we can't, we're not going to expand it beyond that 300 acres. And the additional feature about this site is that because of gas lines and utility lines and streams, this is where the site's going to be. You're not going to be able to expand it. You can't jump over a gas line or utility line and go, you know, continue the landfill. And so when people say, well, you just said it's 300 acres, well, that's what it's going to be and not anymore. So the site is unique. It passed all of the tabletop environmental due diligence fatal flaw work that we did. And now we've probably spent the last six months going back and doing the actual on the ground fatal flaw work. T?
Really, Ernest, I mean, this site is so unique and it is so well-suited for the type of development that we're trying to do here, that we're just so excited about it. Once we had a chance to really go out in and walk it and do all of our desktop analysis that we've done on it. Right now, I think I'd like to try to introduce our landfill engineer, Michael Stubbs. Michael is president of landfill engineering firm Hygge's Harbor Newberry and Tribble, which is based in Macon, Georgia. Hygge's Harbor Newberry and Tribble is the preeminent landfill engineering firm east of Mississippi. There hasn't been a major landfill project done in the state of Georgia in the last 20 years. It hasn't involved HHNT. Michael is a graduate of George Tech University. And I'd go ahead and like to introduce Mike. I'd like Michael to talk a little bit about the environmental aspects of that site. Go ahead, Michael.
All right. Hey, guys. Thanks, T. And Ernest. So like T. said, my name's Michael Stubbs. I'm, well, the president of Hygge's Harbor Newberry and Tribble. This is about my 24th year here. Been involved in, I've actually never really counted them, but hundreds of landfills all over the country, primarily in the southeast and dozens just in the state of Georgia. One thing that, a couple of things I want to talk to you just generally about, when you're talking about a landfill and we do lots of them all over the country, is those things that a modern day landfill is designed to protect. And the first we'll talk about in any facility is the groundwater beneath the landfill. So there's groundwater underneath everything. So you want to make sure that you protect that common. The primary means of protection of that common is what we call a liner system. Now, engineers like myself or what we have to stand on is our reputation. And so because of that, I'm third party to this group. And so I get paid to take a look at the job and make independent decisions about how this site and this system would function as it relates to the protection of the environment. And so the first element that we're going to talk about is the protection of the groundwater. The groundwater, I think they're going to drop a section on here that's straight so I can look at it, is essentially you spend lots and lots of time and money determining the location of the groundwater and how deep it is. And then any liner system that you place in a landfill is what we call a composite liner system. Number one, it's well above the groundwater. And we take measurements to make sure as the groundwater fluctuates that we know exactly the highest level it will ever be. And then we build a liner system above that. The liner system is what we call a composite liner system. Engineers by our very nature are redundant. We like multiple systems that aren't related to one another that provide redundancy in the protection of the environment. That's exactly what a liner system that you're looking at here in this sketchy is. It's made up of several components. First component is, and I'm going to work from bottom up, is obviously separation to groundwater. But the second is a clay liner. It's a very impermeable sole that is placed in very thin lifts, compacted and tested throughout the entire process to where it's very, very impermeable. Also, the landfill is drained to common collection points. On top of that, you have what we call intimate contact with an HDPE. It's a really, really thick piece of very high density polyethylene plastic that is manufactured for this purpose. It sits on top of the clay in intimate contact with it. And what that is designed to do is that part of the engineering analysis is if, and this is if you had water that stood on top of the liner 12 inches tall, it would take 20, and there was a hole in the liner, it would take 20 years for that water to push, one drop to push through the bottom of the clay liner. And so you have a very redundant and protective system. Everything is sloped to a common point. The liner is what we call construction quality assured all the way through by third parties. Everything is tested and then it's sloped to these collection points. In addition to that, we have a protective cover system that sits on top of the liner. That's exactly what it sounds like. It protects the liner system. Its first job is to protect the liner system. It also is made up of a series of pipes and gravel that convey any liquid coming from the waste to these common collection points. And again, we're talking about waste that's underneath our sinks, each and every one of us. So that's the type of waste we're dealing with. And this water that comes through the landfill from the waste is collected along this liner system and is collected along the common, the collection point. The real, it's really not hard math, it's really simple, is if you don't want something to leak, you simply remove the water. And so the liner system is a barrier and a very effective barrier to prevent anything from leaking through the bottom, but we don't stop there. We simply remove the water from all the collection points. We have ways of measuring the liquid level on the bottom of the landfill. We do that literally every day at the pumps and we move the liquid off the bottom of the landfill so it can't build up what we call head or pressure on the liner system, even though the liner system is designed to handle it. So we simply remove that wastewater, it's got a name, we call it leachate, but its wastewater is treated very much the same way as wastewater from when you flush your toilet home. It goes to the same wastewater treatment plants that are designed to treat that material. In addition, we also have outside the facility, we have groundwater detection wells that are designed to detect if anything ever did happen, long before it gets very far from the footprint, if there is any indication that there may be a problem below ground. We call these groundwater detection wells. We sample those at least every six months. And then a third party professional specializing in that material, in that, those analysis determines if anything's going on underneath the landfill. And the rate at which the facility, water flows underneath the facility is not, you know, somebody might think, well, it's like a garden hose running on concrete. No, it's, you know, maybe inches or feet a day of migration, not thousands of feet a day. So it's actually a very slow process, even if something did cause a problem. Not only do we protect the groundwater, we also protect what we call commons like vectors. The waste is covered every day when it's placed in there. So you won't have those vectors getting into the waste that could cause a problem. And then we also collect the gas from the landfill as any of the organics may decay. We collect the gas from that facility. That gas, once it becomes to a certain amount, which is pretty early in the history of the site, that gas can be used for beneficial reuses, a gas to energy plant, something along those lines. So we're protecting the groundwater, we're protecting the common vectors that could potentially be attracted to a disposal facility by protecting the waste. We're collecting any gas and that is a protection of what we call the air or the air common. Therefore, the facility is when it's closed up, we call that dry entombment. We essentially put the same liner system on top of the landfill that's on the bottom. And then we monitor that facility for a minimum of 30 years. As the waste continues to degrade, the facility will continue to be monitored, both groundwater and the air permits. So you have groundwater and air permits on the site. In addition, during the operation of the facility, it does rain. And so when it rains, any waste that contacts the disposal disturbed area, not the waste. If water touches waste, it goes to the liner system and is treated as such. If water touches the area that's disturbed, the cover, it is routed to stormwater ponds. And those stormwater ponds are the minimum, the design from the state is required before a 25 year storm. We design our ponds, because it's environmentally beneficial, to essentially be well overdesigned to where not only do they pass the 100 year storm, they will pass the 100 year back to back storm. So significant overdesign, redundancy in the placement of both the liner system, the stormwater ponds and the air protection system and the gas systems. As, and like I said, I've been involved in many, many landfills over the years. And Ernest alluded to it early. The site generally selects itself. There are dozens of things we look at as selection of a site. And this site has everything that's needed for a safe and environmentally protective disposal facility. The soils are there. It is actually really unique to have a facility this close to major transportation routes that doesn't go through any, I mean, you come right off the interstate and ride into this facility. This is the best one I've ever seen, being so closely located to a major thoroughfare. And once you get off that major thoroughfare, you're right into a very long access road. And then the site is really just kind of tucked in or nestled in between the topography that further makes it extremely unique in the way a facility is usually sited. It's really a lot of advantages to this particular location. The last thing I'll sum up with is I touched on a few of the commons, but we also look at a lot of other studies. These things include floodplain studies. So to make sure that when it does rain and rivers and creeks and streams get out of their banks, that we're not going to impact floodplains. We study things like cultural resources. We want to make sure we're stewards of our cultural heritage. We study things like wetlands and streams and threatening endangered species. We also look at more social things such as environmental justice issues. There are probably a few more that I might be missing, but for the most, oh, we also look at odor, traffic control and noise. Those are some that are generally associated with industrial facilities that we all look at. All those studies have been prepared. And like I said earlier, this is just a really good site based on its location. It has all the things that are needed for safe operation of a landfill. They're all right there in the facility. And with that, I want to turn it back over to T. And Ernest. Thank you for the time.
And additional what Michael just described, the last thing that's so unique about this site is within a mile of the footprint, where that's where the waste is going to go, within a mile of that footprint, there are 62 pieces of property, property owners, some of which don't have residence or housing on it, some do, eight to south of the interstate. To have a site that's as close as it is to a major metropolitan area and to be able to find a size like we did and that few homes that are close to it within a mile is pretty much also very hard to find. And one of the things that we do with each one of our projects is we develop a host agreement, which in the end actually is a contract with the community itself. People say, well, why do you develop a host agreement? Well, we develop a host agreement so that if someone is going to make a change to anything, they can't do, they can't just run down to the state and petition for something to be changed and the local community find out about it afterwards. So that makes sure that if there's going to be a major change of any kind, that it has to go back through the county commission. Now, in this particular case, our host agreement, we're going to have several things in there. One is we will develop a 260 acres so far. That's the size of industrial park. That'll be jointly developed by the county, by the industrial development board and by the chamber of commerce of Harilson County. We do not, even though we do industrial development work, it's one of the things I love to do the most, but we don't go out here and just, you know, trying to go out against everybody else. We'd like to have them and be a part of their team and we can assist with the land that we have. And if they need any expertise, then we'll, you know, we can help with that. This facility, before we get open, it'll probably be seven years. It'll take us five years to permit this and another year and a half, two years to construct it. So, you know, it's important that we start today trying to find out what we want to have in this host agreement. The host agreement will limit the site to 300 acres. Where the waste is going to go cannot exceed 300 acres. You have to give long-term assurance to the county of where that will have the capacity there to handle all the county's waste. And I think it's for the next 25 years. We were talking about the rate that the citizens or that the cities and counties will get when they come to the scale. And it will be a significant amount of difference between what you're getting, what is costing you to take and go through a transfer station, transport it and then pay disposal for the waste that's coming out of the county. That host agreement will have a negotiated dollar amount in there for how much the county's waste and the city's waste is going to cost. Another unique piece of it is in there that we talk about the citizens will be able to bring this disposal waste at no charge on Saturdays. Everywhere we do this, Saturday mornings, there's a long line of people waiting to get in to dispose of their waste. They'll have a separate citizen convenience area that'll be set up so you're not going up on the working face where it's, where it's dangerous because of all the movement going around. But you'll be able to take your waste there for the items that we're going to be able to still recycle, the place there at the convenience center, where you can put things that we deem that there's a market for, that you can put your recycling goods there. The county will get $2.50 per ton for every ton of waste that comes through there. Now, in this particular case, when you look at a 30-year lifetime of this site, that will mean somewhere between $65 and $72 million to the county. And we go beyond that, that's a state mandated fee. We go beyond that by giving an additional dollar to the cities that's divided up by population so that they can do the kind of things that they need to be doing. We always like to ask that at least 50% of this money is dedicated to infrastructure. Because as we all know, you know, Harilson County is probably one county away from big growth coming. And you can have planned growth if you don't have planned infrastructure. You know, people ask us, well, what can the county use that money for? Well, you know, we've been in the county long enough that we've heard things like, you know, the county needs county-wide internet or the county needs a reservoir. You know, you have to think about all these different things and how you can use this money without raising taxes. You can use this money for grants from different federal groups, not just the state, but different federal programs that are 75, 25 or 80, 20 grants so that you can really, really leverage this money into something that's, that you can do that's really important for the county. We have to provide as part of this financial responsibility with the state. Before we open, the state will send us a letter saying that we need to deposit X number of million dollars into a closure, post-closure account. And then each year, they'll send a letter at the end of that year that you owe so much more. And what this has done is to ensure that the closure and post-closure will happen and will be maintained if for some reason, you know, we weren't on the site. You've got a property value protection program here that says that any homeowner within a mile of that site, for 10 years after we open and start accepting waste, if they cannot get the appraised value of that house and that property as if it's not sitting next to a landfill at that point in time, then we pay the difference if you can't get the appraised value. And we're confident, you know, we've been doing this a long time and we're very confident that, you know, people just are not going to get hammered by residential piece of property, you know, being next to a landfill. I'm sure there's lots of other things that we'll have to talk about as questions come in. I want to close on one thing, though, that we have. We'll be appointing a citizens advisory committee that'll be working with us during the permitting and design and that will be working with us after the landfill is open and running. And that will consist of each mayor will get one appointment. The county commission and the chairman will get one appointment for each one of you. And then we'll have one appointment for the community of Bunkham. They will work with us. They will meet with our managers on a monthly basis. They'll meet with our, with our staff of people and sometimes our engineers, our attorneys, and we welcome their input and suggestions. We ask that people that are waving our flag and support, we might have one or two of those, but mostly we want people that are on the edge of supporting or not supporting. And we want some that are absolutely against us so that they can bring the kind of input that we need to hear, make sure that we provide the best facility we possibly can and answer the concerns of the community. T?
Yeah, that's absolutely right, Ernest. I'm really glad you had an opportunity to go through the host agreement in detail because that's, that is probably the most important aspect of our proposal, it really is. And what Michael discussed is also so important, all the environmental protections, all the studies that we've done. I want everybody to know that we're going to have executive summaries of all the studies up on our webpage when we, when we go ahead and make our resoning application to the county. But anyway, we've But, um, anyway, we've, uh, we did a good job here, Ernest. We, we talked for about exactly 30 minutes. Uh, and what I really want to do is open the floor to some questions. Um, and we really, really encourage everybody, if, if anybody's got a question at all, please, uh, please do so now you can text it in or you can, uh, or you can actually call it in, I think. Uh, so take some questions now.
Hey, T?
Yes.
This is Phil. Hey, there was a question that came in while this was going and, uh, one person asked, what happens if leakage is detected? And I think that may be for Michael that was talking about the landfill saying, if there is any leakage under a landfill, then what do you, what do you do?
Absolutely. Michael, why don't you, why don't you answer that question, please?
So, um, well, first of all, um, of all the landfills I've worked on that had a subd system on it, I've actually never dealt with one that actually had a, had a leakage on it. Uh, but that really is to address a quick question head on. The purpose of the leak detection is exactly what it sounds like. It's to detect it, you would see it in a groundwater well, um, and it would be relatively close to the, um, the, the boundary of the landfill. Um, you would go through the studies quickly, obviously, to confirm that it might actually be liner and may not, I mean, uh, leakage through the liner system and might not be a, um, uh, maybe gas that was trying to migrate through the upper, um, superficial soil. But let's assume that you did have that event. You immediately go to increased testing at least once a quarter. You immediately go to an assessment of corrective measures where the professionals go and look and say, okay, there has been an impact, how do we assess it and how do we correct it? Um, those assessment of corrective measures are done by third parties, um, that are independent from the landfill facility and the owner. And then they go straight into recommending the best assessment of corrective action. Now, I've gone through multiple assessment of corrective actions. They've been all for old unlined landfills, the way that waste was disposed of in the seventies and eighties. And so lots of those, um, the assessment of corrective measure and everything's on the board. It could be anything from, uh, what we call MNA, monitor natural attenuation. Uh, mother nature will clean things up really quick, um, to something as really simple as, look, this is something that we really don't want to continue to migrate past the detection well. And you could, you could just pump and treat. You could pump any contaminated, um, potentially contaminated groundwater and just treat it right there, uh, back to groundwater standard. If there was some sensitive environmental receptor that was relatively close. You also, once you detect, you also immediately step out from that detection well and put further detection wells in to determine if the plume has, has gotten to that well and is starting to move down gradient and you monitor those wells. So if you find it, you immediately address it, you determine the best corrective action. The state approves this, obviously. You implement that corrective action and then you step downstream of that location and make sure that the corrective action remedies any problem and that, uh, any potential contamination doesn't continue to migrate. Um, I'll be glad to, to provide further clarification on that, um, if I didn't, if I didn't get the point, um, that didn't answer the question adequately. Thank you.
Another question came in and it says, uh, how much water will the facility use?
Michael, you, you're probably best to answer that one too.
So a, as I mentioned earlier, and I didn't touch on this and I was remiss for doing so, uh, any industrial facility, um, with trucks and heavy equipment running during the course of the operational day, um, you have potential, potential to maybe generate a little dust. So that's one of the reasons we like to have big sediment ponds, like I mentioned before. Um, not only do they, they hold and retain water, they treat, they give a chance for any sediment, um, to drop out, but those water, uh, sediment ponds are essentially, um, reservoirs that we use for dust control. Um, in the event we're having trouble growing grass in a certain area, we've used those sediment ponds, um, for irrigation. And again, that sediment pond is nothing more than stormwater that's, that's been conveyed to a sediment pond. It does not touch a waste at all. So the actual water needs of the facility are relatively small. Um, those sediment ponds, um, serve as the, as the, the primary means for operation of the facility. Um, if we do usually drill a small well, um, you know, for a break room or something like that, but for the most part, our water needs are relatively small with, once those sediment ponds are constructed, which will be, um, they, they go in first, actually. That's the first thing you build when you start construction.
This question may be a good one for Ernest. Ernest, Eric asks, does the host agreement stay intact as agreed if the landfill is sold?
The host agreement, yes, will stay intact as it is written and agreed on by us and the county commission if it's sold. That's correct. Everything, the permit transfers over, all the aspects that we put into permit, the design criteria we put in the permit, host agreement, they have to take all of that when it's sold.
One other question came in, Ernest, maybe you can tackle this since you are familiar with recycling. It says, uh, so why don't we just recycle all of the waste in Harrelson County rather than having to open a new landfill?
Well, you know, for, I guess 30 years now or more, longer than I've been in this industry, there's been people that are talking about, you know, taking out 80% of the, of the trash out of the waste stream that can be recycled. And the problem, the problem with that is recycling is a, is an industry that's really up and down. For a while now, the recycling industry basically has got to where there's, there's no market. China and India, at least India, who accept most of the waste stream from recycling, have quit accepting it. And so all the warehouses that can be filled up have been filled up. And then when there's no other alternative, then you have to take that to the landfill. Now, you can profit, you can recycle paper and cardboard because we're fortunate here in Georgia that you've got Pratt Industries sitting over there that can take mixed paper and, and create cardboard packaging out of it. And so that, that mark, that part of the market is still viable. But if you're talking about plastics and glass and some of this other, it's, it's going to be a while before that is going to have a market. The problem if you have, when you're talking about recycling 80% of the waste stream, uh, Jim, uh, Waste Management, David Steiner, CEO and, and president of Waste Management, I guess 12, 15 years ago came out, he made an announcement that there weren't going to be any more landfills that were going to be needed because they were going to get the technology and be able to recycle 80% of the waste stream. Well, they went about for three years buying up tens and tens and millions of dollars worth of technology. And it, a lot of this technology you hear about works on a very small scale. But when you try and expand it, it, it doesn't, it, you know, it doesn't, it just doesn't work. We will be the first to be dealing with recycling in conjunction with a landfill when there's a market for it. We're sitting beside land, uh, you know, for a waste recovery facility or recycling facility there on the site. We have to have that when we submit the permit and you'll see it. But you can't recycle something that's not, that, that, that there's not a market for. Hopefully for all of us, that'll change, uh, recycling and landfills, recycling waste energy. They are many, many examples of them working hand in hand and one of them not knocking off the other. So again, when it's viable, we'll be glad to do it. There's a lot of communities, a lot of small communities throughout this country that have been told that this black box was going to come in and they're going to be able to recycle 80% of their waste. And every time, there's example after example, a good one here in Georgia, to where the county gets, you know, signs off on the bonds. And then they get hung with $70 million worth of debt after the people that did it walk away in a year. So, you know, we're all for recycling. I think every one of us, deep down. I mean, I, I started the first major curbside recycling program when I was on city council over in Huntsville, 98,000 households. And we had a tremendous success with it. But you've got to have a market. Just kind of take it. Thank you.
There's another question that came in, T and Ernest, uh, from Rebecca. She says, how do you plan to address the additional truck traffic that will come through Talapusa as they attempt to travel to the facility from the north? The truck traffic is already heavy and too many get stuck on the railroad tracks causing, causing traffic and safety issues.
Well, Phil, the, the logical answer to that is that the stuff that's coming out uh, north of Harrelson County, it's much more convenient to them to go to a different landfill than it is to come to this one. Uh, probably maybe 5% or less of the traffic, uh, you would see coming through Talapusa. Trucks don't like to come through cities, okay? They don't like to have stop signs and, and all the things that, that go along with coming through residential neighborhoods and cities. Most, majority of the traffic will come down 20, exit at exit five, go four or 500 yards and then turn into the landfill. Uh, there will be an occasional truck, I'm sure, um, that will come through there. Uh, more than likely the trucks that, residential trucks, commercial trucks that are currently picking up the waste in Talapusa would be most of what would be coming through there. So that's, you know, a lot of people have shown concern that, well, there's a wreck on I-20 and all that, um, traffic's going to be diverted and come through residential neighborhoods on the south of the interstate. You know, that's, that's, uh, those roads aren't built to hold that kind of traffic. And all these companies, they're all interrelated that haul this waste. And if there's a major wreck somewhere and traffic's back up everywhere, then they're on, talking back and forth to dispatch and dispatch is rewriting them, rerouting them to a different landfill facility until that opens back up again. Time is money. They have to have so many of these trips a day for the driver to make money and for the companies to make money. They are not going to go off course into residential neighborhoods and drive the small two-lane roads that aren't capable of holding those trucks. Next?
Uh, there's a follow-up to that. It says, uh, the interstate exchange is already a mess at times with all the transfer truck traffic. What will be done to address the current traffic flow there? Has anything been discussed with DOT? Will you be able to strengthen that intersection?
Well, DOT, obviously we had to have a traffic study done, which is going to be a part of the zoning application and part of the permit. And that, that will be coming up, you know, we've already have had it done. We meet, we meet the requirements. As you know, they're in the process right now of starting to wide, to widen Interstate 20. Uh, that is the same scenario that we ran into with DOT in Meriwether County. At the time, Meriwether County was an interstate that had two lanes on each side. Well, during the permitting process, you know, they had just started widening it to bear three lanes or four lanes on each side until you get almost right to the turnoff in, in Meriwether County there. And that was all finished, thank goodness. That was all finished right about the time that we, that we opened the facility up. But we're, we're aware of that and we're going to make sure that we do not have traffic that's going to be competing. Next? You know, in addition to, you know, when we talk about, when we talk about traffic, the road that we're going to be using for the landfill entrance is going to be almost a mile and a half long. In the older days, what you saw is that traffic would start backing up on the highway because there was nowhere, you know, nowhere for them to go. When you have a facility like we did in Meriwether County or like we're doing here, we have long entrance roads. Then there's no reason for that traffic to come right off the interstate, go 500 yards and turn in. And it, and it, if it has to stack, it's going to stack on that mile and a half private road, not out on Highway 100 or the interstate.
There's a question that came in and it says, uh, how has this impacted Meriwether County, both positive and negative? So I think that they're talking about the, the, what the project is in Meriwether County. How has that impacted the county positively and negatively?
Well, you know, people would say, well, you know, industries do not want to be next to a landfill or housing doesn't want to be next to a landfill. Well, that facility down there is right at a little over 2,000 acres. And what we haven't seen is we haven't seen a deterioration of property values. You have some very, very nice houses that's been constructed since that time that that facility was permitted and open. Uh, you have a county who, before we came there, Dollar General was a real big industrial announcement. And, and nobody believed that we could, you know, put an industrial park in there. But we started that from the minute that we started talking about the landfill. And I guess there's right at 900 to 1,000 jobs down there right now. Some of them are KIA-related, a lot of them, some of them are from Germany that build big roller presses for steel mills, um, all kinds of different industry, but it's not smoke, it's not smokestack injury, industry. It's, it's high-paying industry, it's not warehousing. Meriwether County in the first quarter of this year, they get a royalty check just like Harrelson County will. Uh, the first quarter of this year, their royalty check was for $970,000 for one quarter. The quarter before that, it was 700 and something thousand dollars. The first four, three or four years until you get to stabilization, you know, that check is going to normally be somewhere between 250 and 300,000 dollars a quarter, which obviously is over a million dollars a year to the community. But those numbers get big, really big. And in a county that had a $12 million budget, 13 million budget, that's a lot of money to give for them to be able to do with parks and infrastructure and all kinds of different things. From a negative standpoint, you know, Phil, you, I'm sure you could go down there and, and hunt up some people that opposed it from the start. Uh, and they'd probably tell you something negative. I think if you talk to the people immediately adjacent to the landfill, and a great example of that was a newspaper article, uh, where the reporter went down there and actually knocked on people's doors by herself, didn't go with us, we didn't know she was going. And, and everybody, you know, can read those responses. What I would tell you is that if you really want to know the truth, okay? Not speculation, not scare tactics, not any of that that's going on. If you really want to go and know the truth, it's an hour and 10 minutes down the road. Go down there, ask around, take a look for yourself. We've had probably 30 or 40 we've taken down there. If you want us to take you down there, we'll be glad to do that. If you've got a civic group that wants to go, then we'll charter a bus and you can go. Or if you want to go by yourself, we'll tell you how to get there and what to do. But that's facts there. You can't dispute facts, what you actually see, hear, smell yourself. And I think you'll be, like everyone else has done that, you'll be astounded at what you see.
Ernest, Rebecca did send a follow-up question and she, she had asked a question about the interstate exchange, it's already a mess. And she said, uh, she didn't think you completely addressed that and said that that particular intersection and the added degradation from additional truck traffic, how will, uh, solid solutions help or deal with that?
Well, you know, we design our roads to get off as soon as we can so that we don't impact state and local highways and roads. Obviously, the interstate is something that takes care of itself. Uh, you know, we, we, this point will not be going and getting on, uh, 100 or any other, you know, local roads that's going to be taking that traffic. Does Ms. Wood, or have they been trying to beep in on the call? Next question.
That's all the questions that I've got that are written in. I'm not sure if anyone else is trying to call in with a question or, or to, to do it by chat, but we can wait just a minute and see. Here, here comes one. I'm sorry, a few more. Let's see. Rebecca asks, how many trucks do you expect daily?
Well, that will change daily based on the, the waste that's coming in. You know, when you first start, the first year, we'll probably have 750 tons, or 750 tons of waste to post, deposited a, per day, okay? And so if you take an average truck coming out of a transfer station, it's going to have 24 tons on it. And so if you divide that by 750, then it'll give you a number of transfer trailers. That, and that will give you, you know, that will give you your answer. Now, what you have to keep in mind is that right now, we're proposing the landfill to be open at 6:00 in the morning, and then it quits accepting waste at 5:00, and has to be closed at 6:00 in the evening. So you, you've got 12 hours that you take that number of trucks and divide it over. And so it's not like you've got, you know, trucks every minute coming by there. It's, when you really get down to the simplest math, it, it's not that many.
Yeah. So Rebecca did some math there, but it weren't, runs into about 31 trucks a day, and divided by 12 hours, she said it'd be about two, two and a half trucks per hour. There is a message here that came from Kevin, and he just says, thank you for being open with us. Not really a question, just a statement.
This, as T said, when he started, is the first of quite a number of calls, Zoom calls that we'll have. And each time, we'll invite more and more and more people from different segments. So do we have other questions from other parties? Rebecca, I'm not trying to cut you off, but I'd like us to get to as many people as we can today to, to ask and see what their questions are.
I do see another question, Ernest, and it is saying, why do we have the host agreement? And can it be changed?
Okay. You know, that's an excellent question. And, you know, we've heard that and heard that in relation to coal ash. The host agreement can be changed by a vote of the county commission, okay? Now, can it change certain things as the, the number of acres and all? As I said before, the, the number of acres where the footprint's going to go is, is fixed. It, you know, you've got both natural aspects that restrains it, plus pipelines and everything else. People talk about Meriwether County and that they took coal ash for about two months, and that the host agreement was changed. Well, in Meriwether County, the host agreement wasn't changed, okay? When we were negotiating the host agreement in Meriwether County, Georgia, nobody in their furthest dreams thought about coal ash coming into a public landfill. The utilities were very, very strict that that coal ash was going to stay on site. And so they built these coal ash ponds to actually store that. Now, we're going to, we're going to have a mechanism, as best we can, in the host agreement that can't be undone for 20 years. Because I don't, you know, I like for the things that we say are going to happen to happen and not be undone, okay? And I'm, we, as a company, are very sensitive if something like that going on. So coal ash was not prohibited from coming in under Meriwether County landfill. Now, everybody has talked about this coal ash a lot, and there's basically five plants that are within this close proximity, that proximity that we may have to address. One's Plant, Plant Bowen, Plant Hammond, Plant McDonough, Plant Wandsley, and Plant Yates. Now, the document that I have is put out by Georgia Power, and they have to update this ash pond closure plan. Every one of those facilities is going to be closed, the ash gone out of it, before we even open. Most of that is being put on site. In other words, they're building new lined facilities on the site, or they're taking old facilities and, and propping them up to where they work. But that's a publicly available piece of information that's out there, that's put out there by Georgia Power. It's the ash pond closure plan. It has to be certified. And so not only are we going to take it, not take it for 20 years, which if I could make it forever, I would, but the law won't let me do that. But before we get open, all this coal ash on these ponds that people were saying we'd be taking coal ash from, is going to be over with. There's not going to be coal ash left there to come to the site. And again, that's not us saying that. You can readily go on Georgia Power's Southern Company's website and look at the reports that are there.
Any more questions, Phil?
Thank you for that question.
No, that's, that's, that's all the questions that I've seen come in. So I think we've done a pretty good job here. Maybe if you just want to invite folks to come back, we'll, we'll set up another time when we'll do this with folks.
Yeah, absolutely. I thought, I think we did a great job here. We, we hopefully got to answer a lot of people's questions. I think maybe a good time to wrap it up. I just want to make a few closing comments here. Solid Solutions Development, Ernest and I and our whole team, we put a lot of thought, time, effort, and money into creating an environmental and economic development project that delivers real long-term benefits to Harrelson County. This doesn't require the county to give up the tax money or spends millions of dollars to bring new jobs. We're not asking for tax abamances. We're not asking for stemming in utilities. We're providing the investment. Solid Solutions Development has the engineering expertise, the legal experience, the proven track record on solid waste projects to work with Harrelson County and make this an economic development project that you'll be proud of. It'll bring jobs and career opportunities for your children and benefit your community from interstate to Main Street. So we really, really want to emphasize to everybody listening at the call, don't-
Jobs for your children, you may have some out there, but not that many.
Well, we think the industrial development aspect of it's going to provide some serious employment opportunity for the residents of, of Harrelson County, just like the industrial development and aspects of the Meriwether landfill project did. So, but what I want to emphasize really to everybody listening is that questions don't stop here. If, Phil, if you could put our contact information up on the screen, our cell phone numbers are listed here, our email addresses are listed here. Anybody who's got any questions, please write these down, call us. We'll schedule a meeting with anyone at any time. We're also happy to take anyone down to Meriwether County so they, like Ernest said, they could see for themselves the facts. We'd love to take some people down there. We'd also love for y'all to go yourselves. So really, that's, that's kind of it. I, I just can't thank everybody enough for spending the time. We know everybody's busy Friday afternoon, so we really appreciate it. And we look forward to hopefully hearing from you. And soon.
If we miss somebody, yeah, we're sorry. But we, you know, please give us a call.
Yep.
We certainly didn't intend to miss anybody, and hopefully we didn't. So thank you.